Good evening. I'll call this meeting to order. If you'd kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson.
Here.
Carmody.
Here.
Fishbein.
Laffin.
Here.
Regan.
Mr. Regan is here. He's running an errand on my behalf. He'll be back in just a moment.
Reynolds.
Here.
Tato.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Moreau.
Here. All right, and I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve or accept Consent Agenda Items 3A through 3K, 3L as amended for medical edits, and 3M.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. There were no items removed from the consent agenda. On to the public question and answer period. Anyone have a question for the council? Mr. Shardula. So, and when we get to the public question, yeah, please at the microphone. And before we get to the public question and answer, so based on a memo that came from the Law Department recently, we're sort of, there's been a recent Supreme, not Supreme Court, Sixth Circuit court case, so we're no longer asking for your address, just your name at the microphone, please, and we'll go from there.
Paul Shardula, 2 Bayberry Drive.
Thank you.
You finished?
Oh, yeah, please, please go right ahead.
Yes. At budget time, I made a prediction that the 2025 forecast, I felt, was inaccurate because it didn't reflect the surplus from the 2024 budget. And that if I was correct, that was then going to reflect in the current budget. So I'm just here tonight to follow up on that. We received the June report for 2025, and it does show a surplus. The expenses came in based on whether you look at the original numbers or the revised numbers, but basically using the original approved budget, as I understand it, we underspent by $6 million and $94,000, and we were overachieved on revenue by $4 million. So we had a surplus of about 10. So, given that we had such a large surplus in 2025, that's going to reflect in this year, and if you go take a look at the September report, we just received that, we're underspent on the expenses through September by about $14 million. So we have this budget process that continues to be perpetuated, which frankly results, I believe, in excess taxation. And given that the surplus for 2025, which just ended in June, was larger than the tax increase, which was about $6 million, I'm here to make a request, and I'd like to direct this through the chair to the Mr. Mayor, if you would consider issuing a tax credit for the tax increase in 2025 before Christmas. I think that would be a nice gesture. The money seems to be there, and considering the, you know, the large increase we had last year, it would be a nice thing to do.
I'm going to defer to the comptroller for a whole variety of reasons.
I'm sorry?
Said I'm going to defer to the comptroller for a whole variety of reasons.
Okay, good.
So let's first get one thing straight. When you're looking at those reports, those are not surpluses, those are variances, those are positive variances. So when you make a budget, the most we can spend is the appropriation. So you're never, we're never going to have a negative, unless we spend every dollar, there's going to be a positive variance, because it's illegal for us to spend more than is appropriate. So what you're looking at on your report is, yes, we did not spend everything we're going to spend. That does not mean we have $7 million. The audit has not been issued yet, so I'm not going to speak for the audit, but currently, when the audit comes out, there's a surplus of probably $1.9 million, not $10 million. I don't know where you get your math from, but you're not using proper terms, and your making claims that are not true. There's not $10 million laying around that we can give back to you.
All I can say, Mr. Senna, is I'm using the reports that you published, which show the expenses.
I just told you, you're not reading them right.
Pardon?
That is a variance, it's not a surplus. A surplus is actual revenues minus actual expenditures gets you to the surplus, not budgeted out minus actual gets you the variance. You have to look at revenues and expenditures. You can't look at an expenditure report and say, oh, we overspent $8 million, we have $8 million surplus. That's not how it works.
I agree with you that it's, the surplus is the revenue, the expenses, minus revenue. And the, can I finish my statement?
So we've had this conversation many times.
Sir, can I finish my statement?
And you don't want, you don't wait, you don't want to listen. You just keep coming back and saying the same things over and over again.
Right, and I will continue until someone convinces me that I'm wrong, and so far, I don't understand what you're saying. If you look at the revenue generated, we generated $200 million, $200 million. That includes the fund balance that you allocated, so it's $200 million, and our expenses were $190. So 200 minus 190 is 10. Where am I wrong? As far as the audit is concerned, and this is a compliment to you, Mr. Senna, I am not aware of any audit that Wallingford was not judged to be excellent. So I don't expect any changes with the audit. The second point about the audit is, that's a totally different animal. It's June or January of this upcoming year, which is a full six months after the end of 2025. It's too late to do anything. We have a faulty budget process, in my opinion, that someone needs to stand up and change. That's my recommendation. You haven't convinced me that I'm wrong. I'm happy to sit with you, if you'd like, and the mayor, and maybe somebody from finance who can help me understand better, but frankly, I think you're wrong. That's just my opinion. So, Mr. Mayor, will you issue that credit? You don't have to do it all at one time, you could split it in half. You could issue a $3 million tax refund for Christmas, and then the other $3 million, when the next tax bill is due.
I understand the basis of your request, however, I'm not going to express any opinions on the budget from last year until the audit's final.
Okay. I, all I can do is ask, and I guess the last point I'll make is to the council. I think it now rests in the council's hands, and I would ask you to give serious consideration to what I'm asking for, and put it to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Kellogg?
My name is Larry Kellogg. I live in on Stetson Street, and I understand I don't want to tell you that. But, and I've come here before on what I consider a very simple issue. It's a safety issue. Walking across the street as a senior with my little pup, across North Turnpike Road at Parker Farms, I almost have been run over numerous times. It's that simple. I brought this to your attention via email to everybody on the board except for the mayor, which I delivered, hand-delivered, the same information to him six weeks ago. So every, Ms. Allison, or Ms. Allison, if I mispronounce or missdo anything, I'm sorry, but I'm old. I'm 70, over 70 years old, so I am not into pronouns or whatever you want to call them. So we'll go from there. So last night, I received an email from the chairman, which I appreciate. I, don't get me wrong on this, I am not asking for anything special, but a safety issue. So after our last meeting, I continued to walk around our neighborhood. I literally live on Stetson. I go Colonial, Elmwood, all that whole neighborhood. I forget the other street names up around, all the way up to Sheehan and back down near the school and everything else. So I talked to people as I'm walking along. People are refusing to cross North Turnpike Road to go to Neils because it's unsafe. How, my question to this board, and I asked your town attorney, two weeks, no, over a month ago, right here, he said he represents the town, he couldn't answer my question, which was, what statue actually points at that out? Not a problem, I figured that out, I brought it up at the last meeting. So, six weeks later, last night, I get a memo, I get an actual email, I'm sorry, that's saying, the town chief, police chief, is asking for a memo from the engineering department to send to him, so he can represent that, to the state, to fix a traffic signal. Now, my question to you is, and I know this is rhetorical, if that same traffic signal was that choke on Center Street, would it take six weeks? Produce this memo? Mr. Chairman?
So I would say that the same, we'd follow the same process, right?
Oh, you're going to follow the same process?
Well, hang on, hang on. If it was a front choke, that would be Town Road, which would be a different process.
No, it's Center Street, which is considered 130.
Okay, so if it's on a state road, then we would follow the same process. So the police chief went to engineering to get a memo, so she could write it in sort of engineering language to explain to the state why it is that she thinks that the signal violates the standards for signals, right? So she agrees that there's an issue. So I'm not pushing back at all, I believe there's an issue too, but we still have to follow, it's a state road, it's the state's signal, we have to follow their process.
Okay.
So she'll prepare the memo, the chief will sign it, and then it'll go to the state to get addressed.
Believe me, I work for a nuclear power plant, I understand process, procedures, and whatever you want to point out, but I know from a point that if it's a safety issue, that takes priority over a civil or even a criminal issue, a safety issue. Let, and I just want to point this out to you, how many of you have actually went and pushed that button, either on Parker Farms or on North Turnpike Road? Any of you? None? Okay, that answers that question. Now, the next question is, would you feel your mother, your daughter, your sons, or your husband, would you feel comfortable for them crossing that road when the people at the trailer park right across the road won't cross the road to go to Neils, which is a famous damn donut place? Come on. Six weeks to produce a memo that I'm sure has to go through your lawyer? There's no doubt in my mind that has to go through the lawyer, to go to the state because, so what are we talking? When I ran multimillion-dollar projects at a nuclear power plant, they asked me, how long? When is it going to happen? How long is it going to take? When I was a supervisor, and we had an issue, the president of the company would say, how long is it going to take? Do I have to shut down the plant? We're talking a plant that would literally cost them over $1 million a day, and believe me, you shut down, you're down for at least seven or eight days, minimum. So really, come on, people. A safety issue that would take literally somebody to walk over to that controller cabinet with either a laptop or a handheld device and go, fixed. And I'm serious, it's a PLC, programmable logic card, that they know, they know they have an issue. So really, come on. Step up to the plate just this once before somebody gets killed or somebody's pet gets killed, because from what I understand, somebody's pet already got killed over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with anything for the council? All right, moving on to old business. Mr. Farrell, do you have an update on Henbrook Lane?
I do, Chairman Moreau. There has been another easement obtained, another easement is waiting for signature, and it looks like it's getting very close to where the town would be, oh, I'm sorry, a heighten has been raised to, very close to the town being able to accept that move.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. Moving on to Item 7. I'll take a motion, I'm sorry, Mr. Hutt. All right, what happened for us this evening?
Good evening, councilors, Jim Houghton, HR Director. I'm here tonight to seek your approval of a three-year contract with Teamsters Local 443. The town recently reached a tentative agreement with this bargaining unit. This bargaining unit consists of sewer employees, clerical, public works, and engineering, and animal control employees. The contract would run from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027. The tentative agreement provides for wage adjustments for employees in the bargaining unit, various adjustments that I provided you in a memo, October 10, 2025, plus general wage increases of 2% July 1, 2024, July 1, 2025, 2.5%, and July 1, 2026, 2.5%. The TA provides for increases in insurance, prescription drug copays, and employee cost share increase from 16% to 17%. Also provides for an increase in safety shoes from 150 to 180, then effective July 1, 2026, the amount increases to $200. Provides for an increase in clothing for employees in public works and sewer and engineering from 275 to 350, and provides for five days of vacation after six months of service for new employees, and also incorporates Connecticut sick leave law into the contract, and provides for employees can use sick time once it's accrued as opposed to waiting for six months. So that's the high-level points, the substantive issues, and I'll take any questions if there are any.
Questions from the council? Questions from the public? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hutt.
Thank you.
How about good evening?
Thank you.
All right, and on to Item 8, Discussion and Presentation Regarding the Wallingford Emergency Shelter. Good evening, Mr. Gill.
Good evening.
All right, I believe the council received your packet of information today, yesterday?
Yes, and there was also a further document that I sent this afternoon when I realized it had not been attached in the packet.
Okay.
If you have not received it, I have printed copies for you as well. Did everyone receive it?
Okay, yep.
So, thank you again for the opportunity to talk to you guys about the emergency shelter. I listened to your concerns and desire for additional information. I hope that I have satisfied some of that by being able to provide what we have. Again, it begins with just a description of the services that would be provided on, at the seasonal adult shelter here in Wallingford. This is what we contract for, this is the work that we do in that facility. Counselor Testa, last time, spoke directly to me about the family shelter as well behind. And this is where I must beg the pardon of the council, because they are two apartments, I always have referred to them as permanent supportive housing, but Counselor Testa was absolutely correct, it is a family shelter. The problem that we have, if we want to call it a problem, is that because housing placement has been so difficult for families, it's no longer operating on a timeline that would be typical of an emergency shelter. People are having to stay longer, and so those units stay full. As soon as there is any chance to move somebody out, we have families from Wallingford and the immediate area that we're moving in. And so I wanted to make sure that that was made clear, because I had spoken differently about that. The other services then are the family shelter that are in the two of the units behind, and there are two more units that are permanent supportive housing, that are also behind the emergency shelter. I wanted to make sure that I made that clear, that on that property, we have those three different activities taking place. The supportive services that are necessary for successful housing placement are also described. If you continue to the next page, you will see a page on utilization. I understood that you had not seen any data about the individuals and kind of some of the factors of how we are getting people and bringing them into this program. I tried to give you as much historical data on this as possible without going completely into the weeds, but to give you a sense of the individuals that we are serving. Again, 2020, I think, for everyone, is a year that time forgot. It is not representative of how the facility is run the majority of the time. If you turn to the next page, we gave you two full years of operating expenses, so that you could see how money was spent. You can see for the year of '24, that revenue, at that time, there was a negotiation for support from the United Way of Greater New Haven that actually subsidized the Wallingford shelter, and additional contributions that made that short term possible. This also is not representative of the total cost for the program. So what I have had to learn since I've been here in June is take a hard look at the way that they have been tying out costs. There was addition to revenue and additional programs that they were able to tie costs from Wallingford to, to lower the total costs that went into this contract. And so there was subsidy taking place on a regular basis for this program from other revenue streams that just simply aren't available anymore. We all know that EFSP has evaporated at the federal level. Nobody's getting that anywhere. Then the document that I sent you separate is the revenue for this immediate last year. You can see that it is less because we started later. It also demonstrates the revenue that was provided by the city of Wallingford, the money that came through United Way, which Counselor Regan made me aware was his participation, and one other group of individuals, and then it ties out costs so that you can see how the money was spent last year. Now, I know the money's always a thing, so do you want to stop and ask any questions about that?
Questions? Counselor Allison?
So I don't so much have questions on the financing in general, because I know, I know what we're here for is the, you know, supplemental data that we requested last time. So, Mr. Chairman, I did notice that there's no possible action on the agenda for this, so I'm hoping that we, I guess, if we don't have the ability to make action on it, could we either make a friendly amendment that we can make action, or can you tell me why we wouldn't?
So, yeah, I think it was, it was noted as discussion, because we have to find a source for the revenue, right? And I hadn't heard from the mayor that we have a source, but if we do, then we could certainly, you know, so the, our practice has always been that if it's discussion, we don't have a motion, but there's really nothing in Roberts rules that requires you to notate the agenda in that manner. So I don't see why we couldn't have a motion, or at least express an intent to fund it, you know, if we knew what the source of the funding was. So, you know, because the funding comes from like two components, right? The mayor has to recommend it, and then it goes to the council. So without a recommendation from the mayor, it's sort of out of order for us to move the money forward tonight, if that makes sense.
I understand that. I think that, you know, the problem is now we're into, you know, November 28, or, I'm sorry, October 28, having a hard body experience, and we don't have funding for this, we don't know how this is, you know, we still don't have a plan, knowing that we're heading into tonight for this funding. I think that when we discussed all of this during the budget time, we wanted this information specifically in order to move forward. It wasn't necessarily that we're never going to fund this, it was that we were not supplied with sufficient information last year to give us good faith that this would be a viable project or use of funds this year. I also would argue that we seem to find money for many other things when other areas are, you know, kind of looking for things, so I definitely have full faith that the mayor and the comptroller can find some way to fund this, or even if we were to, you know, fund part of it with, you know, some additional benefactor or figuring out other ways to raise money. I definitely think that we need to make a decision, so I don't want to be out of order, and I don't want to be disrespectful to the mayor or the comptroller about this, but I do think that it's very important that we make and vote on a motion, at least showing our support regardless of whether we know the financing, because I would ask that we find the finance. And again, I don't mean to put Mayor Sermoni in like a tight spot at all, I just think the time is of the essence, and as I have been wearing a coat to work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Uh, please, Mayor.
The administration, when it proposed the budget in spring, it did support, provided some funding. You know, it wasn't clear to me what the council's intention was tonight after the last meeting, so if the council's inclined to support funding the shelter, then we'll find the money, and we'll see that the transfer occurs timely.
Would you?
But I was, we're kind of waiting to hear what the council's desire is.
Would you take offense if I made a motion?
Personally, no.
Well, no, as the mayor, I don't care personally, like, you know.
So, but Mr. Gill, what would be the drop dead date by which this decision would have to be made in order to have the shelter open, say, the way it was prior to last year?
So, right now, we are planning on opening December 1st.
Okay.
Which is sooner than last year.
Okay.
So that we can get ahead of the extreme cold weather. We are proposing to operate December 1st through the end of March.
Okay.
Right, so that we can get through that stretch. I will be very honest, I have authorized my human resource department to begin the hiring, and we're doing interviews, because this doesn't happen quickly. And so we're trying to get staff in place, get them trained at our other facilities if they're new and they haven't had experience, so that when we show up here, there is a seasoned, trained group of individuals to provide care. And so I've already committed us to spending money. The question will be how long we can do that.
Okay.
But if I could, do you mind if I just finish through this, or?
Counselor Allison, are you all set?
Yeah, yeah, I'm all set.
I didn't mean to cut you off, Counselor.
No, no.
Okay. So then there was a question by Counselor Fishbein about the cost and why, how it would be more economical to just go ahead and rent hotel rooms. We went ahead and run the math to make sure that we could demonstrate that, that we're actually a more economical choice, and then the budget that we had proposed to you in the past, it's here, and every time I look at budgets, I always look at where you spent the majority of your money. So the next page gives you a breakdown on how personnel is charged out and how that's allocated to this project. Just to recap, we have $72,000 committed to this already through fundraising and other activities, donations, so we are currently short in this budget, $111,000. There is, and again, to go back to the There is, and again, to go back to the other program, there is $30,000, as I understand it, in the Wallingford budget. That has always been allocated to those family shelter units, and that's what we would intend to spend it on. I have the budget for that program if you would need to see it. I can demonstrate to you that we lose $97,000 a year on that program. And so we have to raise funds just to make that one keep going. Because it's permanent housing and because it's families, that's what we've been doing. And so I bring that to you just to say, we've got skin in the game here in this town, and it matters to us. And that's my presentation.
So, well, thank you very much. To Counselor Allison's point, though, so if there's $72,000 already, so the shelter could open December 1, it would just be the question would be how long can we keep it open without funding?
Correct.
So there's not necessarily an emergency now for the funding, but, you know, we do have some time to make a decision on it, right? Because if we could, we open for a couple of months, and then, then it would become the question mark. So I'm not trying to, you know, delay a motion on it. I'm just, if we want to get our ducks in a row as far as the source of the money and so on.
If I may?
Please.
I also have a board that I report to, and I'm gonna have to demonstrate the reason we're investing so many resources, because we would be open for a season.
Understood.
Because I'm also making a commitment to people that are looking for jobs.
Right.
And it's pretty hard to just say, I got a four-week job for you. I got a five-week job for you.
Right. Understood. And my suggestion was not that we would support it for a month. I mean, you would, or not that we would wait until January to make a decision.
I see.
But just that it didn't have to be made tonight necessarily. Onto Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
You adjusted the $30,000 into the long budget. Goes to the family units?
Correct.
I thought last time you said it was the opposite.
I was incorrect. That's why I'm saying I'm begging your pardon.
Okay.
I had always seen it as permanent housing, and now I understand how it's always been labeled. It's just how it functions is what confused me.
So I was under the impression that $30,000 that we give each year was for the emergency shelter? Is that?
Which is the family side, those two apartments. It is a family shelter.
Right.
But they're staying much longer than, like, if you would talk about the regular Wallingford shelter.
So the money, so, Mr. Mayor, may I ask you, so the $30,000 we give, that was never for the, the shelter, well, the shelter in the front, I guess, for lack of a better term?
My understanding is that it was for the units in the back.
So then, in theory, we never gave, we were never giving money to the shelter, the shelter meaning not the two units?
Last year you did, to the tune of $22,000.
But that, to be clear, that wasn't in our budget.
Yes.
We raised that after the budget.
I believe in the past, the city was able to count on FEMA and the EFSP money being available as a subsidy for the shelter. And so I think that's what had relieved the tension from the council having to deal with this issue. Now that the federal government has eliminated that entire funding source, we're at this point.
Okay. That's interesting, because I, I mean, it's something like third budget, right? Sixth budget? And I always, I was always under the impression that it was for the, not the units in the back, that it was for the shelter, that's the way we're funding. So that's, maybe that was on me, but I, I don't ever remember it being presented that way. If we go to the slide on the hotel cost?
Yeah.
So, what I'm confused about here, so if we look at your numbers from, let's look at 2024. So those 14 was the, was the total amount served?
Mm-hmm.
For the, for the season.
Uh-huh.
But now, those 14 were not there for 18 weeks, correct? They would be there for a few days or a few weeks, or, I would assume, a varying amount of time?
No, that's not necessarily the case. As individuals are able to come in out of the cold, if they're in the bed, they'll get to keep the bed.
But how many were, because your map here assumes that all 14 people were there for 18 weeks, correct?
Are we talking about the hotel?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm just saying that equivalent to, we're representing that we usually have about 14 beds full, so this is equivalent to 14 rooms.
But the 14 beds full, you said that it's 14 total for the whole year, 14 people?
Correct.
So that's not 14 beds full every single day? You're saying 14 people?
No, that's 14 people, no, I'm saying 14 beds were full every day.
Every single day for this?
That's my understanding in talking to the staff, yes. I am also still doing forensic work and getting through data. This is the best and most accurate that I have for you available, because I knew it was a concern, and I'm trying to be as transparent as possible.
Well, yeah, because my concern is last time, I mean, that we had this same discussion, and it was that there were 14 people total over the whole season, not 14 people every single night for 18 weeks. So I'm just trying to do the math, you know, if the math assumes that there were 14 people every single day for 18 weeks, that's a lot different than there were 14 people there sporadically for 18 weeks, some nights maybe two people, some nights maybe 13 people.
Sure, I understand.
So obviously, that would affect your cost if you're putting people in a hotel, if it's two people opposed to 14 people or, you know, sporadic.
Sure, I understand. It's, it's my understanding that we would have at most an empty bed.
Every single day?
That's my understanding. So we have 15-bed capacity in that facility, is what I understand. Right? I haven't seen it set up yet. I've been there, but I haven't seen it functioning yet. I have talked to the staff that managed it, and from three seasons now, I've talked to folks. And so that's been what I've been told. Now, last year, again, was different, starting late.
Mm-hmm. Right. But even in '23, '22, and '21, it was 12, 15, and 14?
Correct.
For the total?
Correct. That was the average again.
Okay. I just, and this is nothing, it's nothing against you, or I just.
It feels unclear to you, I can see.
The math doesn't sit well with me, and I felt the same way the last meeting, and I was hoping that this meeting is, will clear it up, and it seems even fuzzier now. Because I can't make a decision to spend taxpayer money if I'm not sure that there's a cheaper way to do it. And I, I get what you did with the cost comparison here, but I don't, you don't seem 100% sure that that's accurate, and I'm not sure it's accurate, because if you didn't have 14 people there every single day for 18 weeks, then that's not the actual cost.
So what I will tell you is, the things that we learned in COVID about putting people in hotel rooms without associated supportive services, meal services, assessment, unfortunately, we had people overdose on their own. We had individuals that had other medical needs that weren't cared for, and we lost folks. We had people that had behavioral health challenges. And then you have an owner that's working with a nonprofit that now has damages. Right? So without having staff with people in sightline, it can really complicate things. I understand the desire and the idea, and in many ways, there's, there's good points to it. It is very difficult with the population that we're bringing inside, right? Because these are often individuals that struggle with participation, and so it takes time to build those relationships. And I would strongly encourage the council to be incredibly cautious about putting that type of a program in place. We've, we've made a lot of repairs.
And I'm, and I'm not questioning, obviously, the services you provide, I'm not questioning that, but we have to look at, so, we have a lot of, well, I feel we have a lot of duplicative services in town. So we have many groups, we have departments in town who deal with the same issue. We have other nonprofits that we give a lot of money to every year that deal with these same types of issues. So I just, I just, for me, I need to know, like, the data and the cost for this, and then we can decide, you know, is this worth it, or are we already offering these types of services? Is this a good use of our taxpayer money? And I, I just, I'm not comfortable with the, with the numbers right now. That's, that's my issue.
So, just to be clear, there are other emergency shelters in town that have capacity?
No, well, we have the two in the back, but we have other regional resources. We have other departments who deal with addiction issues. We have other departments that deal with youth and social services. We have other nonprofits who we give money to that deal with. So you were saying one of the things that you deal with is addiction services and things like that?
Sure.
So I'm just saying, we need to make sure that we're spending the money wisely. And I just, the, the math isn't sitting well with me. I'm not questioning the good that you do at all. I just, I want to make sure we're spending taxpayer money wisely.
I can understand absolutely your concern and your question. I'll just tell you again, the point is, is that we lose people in the cold if they can't come in. And right now, we are heading into a season where we're gonna have problems if we don't have some capacity. And I, I'm happy to answer any questions, but the point is, we're not a primary addiction services organization, right? We do assessments, we have people with lived experience, we do get people into programs, as you're talking about, for long-term care. But our primary purpose is to bring people in, keep them safe, and give them an opportunity to change their life. That's, that's what we do. Right? I don't mean to get too far into it this way, but I just, long ago, I answered the question that I am my brother's keeper, and I have a responsibility to them. Right? Because you breathe, you matter. Period. And that's kind of what we're talking about, is that there's the least of these out there that need a little bit of assistance. And I am very grateful that you're asking such direct questions, because it is important. We're talking about spending somebody else's money, and that matters. I just know that we do good work.
Absolutely. Not, not denying that at all, but I just, I think when you come and ask somebody for $100,000, you have to give the math your data. I'm not questioning the good you do. I just, I would like, I would just like the math so we can make an accurate decision. That's all, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Reagan.
So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you again for attending this session. Just make a general statement, $111,000 to potentially save a life, when the cost of surgeries, even routine, are in the low to mid-six figures, seems kind of, seems like a worthy investment. But our job is very formulaic. Based on the information provided, we need to authorize the comptroller to move X amount of money from account Y to account Z in order to, to, to get these types of things done. So a couple of things. Do you have any feeling of what, I'm assuming you're attending next week's State Department of Housing meeting, results may be as far as contributions from the state into, into, into programs such as this?
So, on a permanent basis?
Per bed.
Oh, on a per bed. So from what I understand, there has been conversations about allocations for specific townships, and, I apologize, are you, are we called townships out here?
Just towns.
I'm used to just towns and say, okay. I'm still learning. But I have not been told that there is an allocation for Wallingford in the ask that has been made. So it is not my expectation to see money from the state. If it comes, I will be overjoyed.
All right. Coming back to staffing.
Yeah.
Do you have information as to how we staffed as far as 2025, just looking back to that six-week period? Did we just pull people double-duty? Did we pull?
Yes.
Other locations, et cetera?
No, we pulled people from other locations, had volunteers, had people even from the development department, just wherever we could get bodies to participate.
So this year, we're looking at extended period of time associated with that new staff?
Correct.
Right. And I understand the need to be, to be prepared, offering services, you know, for four full months versus the six weeks that we had previously. But, but part of my thought process is, well, what if we just brought it to three months? Maybe the burden from the town wouldn't be as much. You may counter that with, say, I can't get people with a 90-day job commitment and something along those lines. Have we looked at reducing, I mean, I don't know what the long-term forecasts are, nor do I think they're accurate, so, you know, at, at some point in time, we have that factor in there. Of course, it could be a 70-degree winter for the entire time, and, and, you know, we'll all be fine.
Sure.
So hedging that bet, did we look at a 90-day opening, or even, or even lesser? Or was that not considered?
I will tell you that I have not developed that. Just simply looking at how things went last year, I did not want to disappoint the town. And so we looked at opening along with, we have, we would have three cold-weather facilities opening. One in Hamden, one down in New Haven, and Wallingford. And so we were trying to coincide with what was gonna happen in New Haven. Hamden is later simply because they don't have a building until January, because they do Christmas and holiday programs in the facility that we use.
Okay. If, if we can nail down these costs, as far as what the town contribution will be versus what private fundraising can be, I mean, I guess, Mr. Mayor, how, who would own this? You know, if that's part of the, part of the, the question of, you know, who, who's in charge of pulling in the money sources? I know you, you did that job last year.
Well, I had a lot of help. I didn't do much of the direct solicitation. You know, the United Way was a huge help. Your foundation was a huge help. But, you know, my understanding is the gap is $111,000?
Yes, sir.
And that takes a huge chunk of what remains in our contingency, which will all be great if we have a warm and dry winter. So, you know, the more we can get from the generosity of the community, the, the better for everybody in, in the end.
So will you and Mr. Son be able to provide, you know, here's the maximum that we would be able to, to fund, to know that when we have a fundraising gap of X? I know, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it's something to, to consider.
If you remember during budget time, you guys, we asked for contingency, and you guys whacked it pretty hard. So we are, we've got, we're sure there's stuff that's not even coming to you, where people are asking for stuff from us, and I have to shut them down immediately because I have hopefully eight months. So I would feel maybe $60,000, and then that would leave us with almost 100, and hopefully we don't have a bad winter.
So the 60 would be this 51. If they already have $72,000 minus the 183, minus the $72,000, with $111,000 left, gap bounds at $51,000 of private fundraising. I, 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 I think I would agree with, with Counselor Allison's, let's try to move this forward approach, using some type of parameter, those are more parameters than we had before, so.
Uh-huh. Yeah. Okay. Onto Counselor Tester.
The information you provided, I, I just have a hard time finding the information that showed you how much money you would need. It made a presentation to us that I missed it.
It was in the, it was in my first presentation. It, but if you look at the budget, right, we have $183,000.
Yeah.
We committed to the council last meeting that we raised 72. That leaves us 111.
So, but I mean, it's not written here somewhere?
No, I apologize.
No, that's okay, but.
I, I just.
Well, the way some folks were talking, I was thinking there was something I didn't see.
No, no, no.
I certainly have already seen. So we.
I did that assumption thing.
No problem.
So I apologize.
So that's where we're going. I noticed you gave us some information, and I was just trying to make sense out of it. I know the, like, the revenue expenses for fiscal year '24.
Yeah.
Oh, because that's, that all you were open from January till the end of March?
Yes.
That's why.
It was shorter.
Okay.
And also, not all expenses are in this report. There were other funding sources and programs?
Yep.
That they tied out costs to.
Got it. And it was another three months? And it was another three months?
That was the second page that I sent you, which was last year's.
Yeah. And that was just for the time you were open?
That was, yeah, that was just six weeks.
Got it.
And again, that was by hook or by crook, they just scrambled to get it done.
Right, so, and the way you mentioned, so your, your plan is to open December 1.
Mm-hmm.
So, for both of them, so it's on here, I just want to make sure I understand it, through the end of March? And it was said before, again, I'm, I'm sorry, but you said you were around one-ten, but then there was?
There's a hundred and eleven that were short.
Right.
We've raised the seventy-two.
Of that?
No.
Got it.
Of the hundred and eighty.
Got it. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Somewhere along the way, I got confused, and now I get it. So, if, again, if the town chose to fund your complete anticipated shortfall right now, we're still looking at about a hundred and eleven thousand.
That's correct.
Okay.
And to Counselor Reagan's point, if the council would want us to open mid-December instead of the beginning, as a savings, I would, I would be open to the conversation. Again, I'm just, it's just cold weather. And so, that would be, we want to be a good partner to this town, and so, open to any conversation we need to have.
Understood, and I appreciate that. I just, I really needed to be certain, you know, what, what we are talking about.
Sure.
When we say if we're going to pay for this, if we're not. I, I'm just, I'm a little thrown by the, just the concept, the con, the conversation about considering putting people to hotels. And then, as, as the conversation continued, I looked up a few things myself, and interestingly, the, the general information mirrored what you had said, which I would imagine anybody would figure out for themselves, that there's no services, no meals, you're giving somebody a room in a hotel, which, and again, and in some cities, it's, it's an emergency situation where they have to.
Sure.
But that carries with it the responsibility to find ways to deliver those ancillary services in hotels somehow, or somehow make sure they're delivered, which is added expense. Not to mention, I, I just, I, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. I, I guess I can't, I, I don't know, I can't foresee a situation where I'd be able to make the trade-off between an expense versus far less than optimal care and delivering what we should be doing with this. And that, that, I don't know, that's, that's, that's a decision I would, I would not be willing to make, but it seems to me it's an absolutely ludicrous idea. Okay, I know what we're looking at, so we'll talk about it. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Thank you. Under Counselor Lafferty. I'm sorry, under Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, if I can just sort of piggyback on Counselor Testa, but, so, during budget, during the budget sessions, we originally had allocated ninety thousand dollars, which it got cut down to thirty thousand dollars. So, my understanding is the thirty thousand dollars that we retain is what's currently operating the two family shelters behind, so those are flush, despite the fact that they operate at a loss, but that thirty thousand goes with the.
Correct.
Okay, so now we're, so we're at zero.
We're.
Okay, so now we're short a hundred and eleven thousand?
Correct.
And Mr. Senna says that we might be able to pull sixty, maybe, so that leaves us fifty-one. I, I, I'm in favor of trying to find a way to move forward with this, because I think it's, it's important. We use the example that we put people in hotels, because we do, as a town, we do, but that's usually when their house is flooded, or there's a fire, or there's things, and while those people might be in distress, they're in distress because of a different reason than the types of folks that you're going to meet and, and who need these types of services. I think, I think it's, it's an important service that we, as a town, provide the people that, that are likely from here, or, or maybe not, who maybe are in need. I don't think we can look at the costs per individual depending on usage, because we have to fund something as if it's full all the time. So, we can't suggest that maybe for one month, we would put five people in per bed, and maybe in this month, because it, it doesn't work that way. So, the costs are pretty much what they are. In terms of the data that you provide, I recognize that, you know, you're, you're not going to, you know, I deal in data myself, but I, you know, I work in, I work for Yale, and we work in clinical trials. It's a lot different than the folks who are collecting census data on the people who are staying in the shelter. So, I, I appreciate what you provide. I think it seems pretty straightforward. I think the additional costs probably have to do with the fact that we weren't paying as much as we should have been, necessarily we as a town, but in general. Historically, it's also going to be open for a longer period of time. I do think that we need to have qualified people working down there so that the shelter itself can be effective, because in addition to providing a place for people to stay, it also provides a place for people to sort of figure out their lives at where they're at in that point. So, you know, I, I've got, I, I view it all as important, I do recognize the importance of trying to find the money, but in general, I think it's a worthy cause. I think that, I think that we could probably find a way to make it happen. I think we pay for a lot of things in town, you know, and we, and we, and we support a lot of projects that cost a lot of money. I think that these types of endeavors are also worthwhile, and so, I, I'm in support of finding a way, although I may not be the holder of that information at the moment as to what that way is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lafferty.
I appreciate Mayor Servoni's offering, saying that they're going to dig down and see what, see what they can pull out, because I think it's important that we do something. And then, I also appreciate the, the thought that could go into some creative ways to trim time off for this, for the sake of considering all sources. I imagine, coming from California, though, you're like, we're going to open later in December, like, it's cold down here.
Right.
I mean, I have photographs of my campaign signs in October covered in snow, and the strongest, the worst storms I remember in my teenage years were all in March, and they all came somewhat unexpectedly. So, I'm, I'm in favor of trying to figure out how, how to do it as you've proposed, with the town putting in what we can put in, and, you know, I'm, I'm offering to, to help on the side with raising money or doing whatever, bringing awareness out. I, I appreciate after our discussion in the last meeting about the hotels, and I threw out some rough numbers on a cheaper hotel that's not even on here, cheaper not than the original average, but my point is proven that it's, it is far more efficient for you to operate the emergency shelter than for us to stick people in hotels. The relative cost, you can see plenty today in chart, the fourteen-month, that, that's an average, I mean, that, that was quarter to the last segment, I'm sorry, let me get that. And it's, I know it's not always the same people either, right? They might be here for three days, then go on, you got a different person, but the average is, is fourteen, right? But without the services, without the food, I mean, there are just stories of, especially during COVID, they, they would put homeless people into hotels, and there's a, we discussed this last time, too, there's a mental health component. They, they might not be, they can't be in an unstructured environment all the time, not they in general, but sometimes. So, from how to treat the room, being alone, without, the services are almost more important than just putting the roof over their head, which I know is what you also work on throughout the whole year. And what we don't, if we don't try to give people a place to go, their, our police and fire are just going to end up having to take care of them, and they're going to end up in hospitals and, and things like that. I mean, what, what if, what if all this saves one person? Like, is that, is that not worth it? So, whoever's keeping track, whether we have the motion or not tonight, because I don't, I don't think we need it tonight, I would go along with it if we did, but I think it would be better to maybe wait, have a budget line that we're moving money from. But I'm, I'm in.
Thank you.
And thank you for, for trying to hold this together, or re-put it back together.
Glad to do it.
If I may, I just.
Please.
Talk it out loud here.
Okay.
But I think you can make a motion to commit to funding it, and then we'll come back at the next meeting with the appropriation sheet, so that you have the proper accounting. So, but the problem we're going to have is, the sheets that come with these transfer appropriations, your auditors and everyone looks for that, so if you don't have all these sheets to, you make the motion, we have nothing to tie, tie it to, so. But I think you can commit that you're going to, going to do it at the next meeting. Just, just, I don't think.
I'm not comfortable with that.
So, I'm, like, again, I was just talking out loud, but I just, without the sheet, I don't think you can do it.
Yes, no, no. Thank you. Under Counselor Allison.
Well, I'm going to make the motion anyways, and if it fails, then it fails tonight, and we come back to it another time, but I make the motion that we support the funding of the Wallingford Emergency Shel, Cold Shelter for the winter months as presented by Mr. Gill.
Sorry. Okay, discussion on the motion.
So, let's see, Mel?
Yeah.
I, I would say a hundred and ten thousand, and unless we can, unless there's some sort of a creative way of, we can't, we can't, we can't not commit to the full amount and then have to hire people and not, you know, if funding comes from another source in the meantime, and the town doesn't have to fund that much, we at least need to fund the whole season, even if another source comes along. Like, and if another source comes along, then obviously the amount that the town has to contribute is less than, but up to a hundred and ten?
Hundred and eleven.
Hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
So, I guess my concern with the motion, though, is without having a funding source, I don't know how we can put a dollar amount on the commitment. Unless, unless you have a funding source, Mr. Senna, temporarily.
If you could put sixty thousand from contingency and fifty-one thousand from donations, revenue donations.
Okay, so we're essentially committing sixty thousand then, and then the other fifty-one would be, we would have to figure out a way to raise it somewhere else?
Right.
So, it's not really a expenditure then on our part?
Well, so it would be two, the sixty thousand dollars would be a transfer from contingency, the fifty-one thousand would be an additional appropriation of fifty-one thousand, where you're adding revenue like the expense.
Right. Okay.
So, if the only, if the fifty-one, if you don't raise the fifty-one thousand, then, you know, you're eating a soap, a front balance.
Okay, so, is that the motion you're making, Counselor Allison?
Sure.
And Counselor Lafferty, is that your second?
Yes.
Okay, so discussion on the motion as presented. So, I, so I'll, I'll go first. So, I, I think, I'm fully committed to supporting the shelter. I think, I think Counselor Tad is right, that we have some duplicitous services in town. However, I think if you sort of put it in order of, of need, I think that we should look at some other services perhaps. I think the shelter, I think part of the reason we were so upset last year is because we had an expectation that the shelter would be funded a certain way and would be open for a certain amount of time, right? And when that didn't happen, we were kind of, we were, the, the council was kind of mad about it, right? And so, I think that, I think the goal ultimately is to have the shelter open for the whole season, right? Because I think we see a need to do that. But I'm uncomfortable voting on a motion with a fifty-one thousand dollar question mark at the other end at the same time. So, I think, I'd like to, I'm okay with the sixty grand. I think I'd like to have a better idea of where we're going to get the rest of the money before we commit to spending money we don't think we have. So, I think the motion is presented, I'm probably out, but I'm fully committed in funding the shelter for the full time period, if, you know, assuming that we can get there. Counselor Testa.
I, I don't, I didn't see how you can, we can pass this motion to spend money without the request from the administration having already been made and put onto the agenda as an item that's going to be voted on, so that it's been disclosed to the public, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's wonderful, and I'm on board with doing what we would like to do, but I don't see the urgency to try to hodgepodge together some type of mix of motions and, and intents, when we can just, next meeting, there could be a proposal, a, a request from the, from the administration for whatever amount they decide they could take out of their, their contingency, and then we can take that one from there. I'm just saying, I'm, I'll, I'll vote for it, I just don't see it as being either proper or, I don't want to say enforceable, but meaningful. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, at that point, I think we've established it's not emergent that it gets done at this meeting, right? Counselor, is there a retort?
So, that wasn't actually the extent of my comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we see all the time regularly, and it's pointed out to us earlier tonight, that we have an oper, and we don't always have the opportunity to move things forward as a town government. We have committed funds up to X amount of dollars, right? I'm happy to withdraw the motion if this is something that everyone is, if this is something that everyone is supporting, but I would like to point out that our next meeting is canceled, so we are not meeting for another month. So, in the meantime, we're asking somebody to open, to, to open the shelter, like, we're asking Mr. Gill to open the shelter with no tangible or intangible commitment, even though we all say, we're going to support this, don't worry, we're going to support it, we just have to find the money. I get it, we're going to find the money, but we always, we will find, like, the money will, we have to find the money. I mean, ultimately, otherwise, we have people who will not have beds at a certain point, we have people who will not have jobs at a certain point if we don't find the finance or that. So, I mean, I don't, honestly, I don't necessarily, I understand everyone's hesitance to do this right now without a clearly defined funding source. However, we are not going to meet again for another month. That is the end of, that is the end of November, basically, well, I guess it's the eighteen, no, the twenty-fifth of November. So, Thanksgiving week, we're going to meet again, and we're going to talk about opening, you know, the shelter, which will be opening in a week, and has enough money maybe to run for, you know, half of the season, but also you have all of these people that have been hired, which, you know, we're committing, but, you know, we can uncommit any time if we don't commit. So, I'm, I'm actually, I'm fine, I'm just saying we have the opportunity to actually do something timely, as opposed to kicking the can down the road and saying we support it, but then not actually committing to support it. So, that's, that's all, and I, I'm not, I don't mean to disparage anybody, Mr. Testa, I'm not, I'm not making comments on any of that. I mean it with all, the highest respect for all of my co-counselors. I just think it's, sorry, Mayor Servoni.
Don't withdraw your motion.
I'm not going to withdraw my motion. I think that it should fail if, I, I think that we should vote, and it should fail if that is where the council truly lies.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
Go, go ahead, Mayor. I would ask that in response to Counselor Allison's motion, that the council consider this a verbal recommendation from the administration based upon Counselor Allison's motion. The funding source will be ratified line by, line by line, using one of our appropriate forms at the next meeting, but that way, Mr. Gill. But that way, Mr. Gill will have something to rely on.
I appreciate it.
Counselor Graviti.
Well, I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for being so willing to support this very important organization in our town. There is a level of urgency. The reason that Mr. Gill is here tonight is because he said at our last meeting, he needs to know if we're going to be able to help him. I mean, we're talking about human lives here. We have the ability to fund this, and we should. I, I can't believe that we're talking about hotel rooms and all of this. The mayor's on board, we should all be on board. We're talking about saving human lives in our community. So I, I appreciate Autumn's motion, and I fully support it.
Thank you. A discussion, uh, Mr. Laffin.
Yeah, I'm, so last year, so many people were so upset that the whole thing closed or whatever, right? Now here we are trying to, we're talking about trying to not let that happen. Now it's actually on our shoulders, like, we can actually stop that from happening. And everybody at this table has at some point or another complained about Wallingford time, and how long it takes to get something done, or that the fund balance is too large, and we should just find ways to spend it down. We literally had the comptroller say that if the donation's going to come in, it would spend down the fund balance. It's just frustrating that, as Councilor Carmody had said, and I appreciate the, the procedural angle that, that Councilor Testa came from, because I'm, I often, and I have argued that in the past, and I agree with that. But who, if, if we're not going to do it, then who's going to? This is it? That's it.
Other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the role, oh, I'm sorry, Members of the Public, any discussion?
Yeah, oh yeah. Oh yeah. Mr. Laffin, you talk about saving one life, spending 111,000. You're looking at the person that I asked for a simple letter. You're looking at the person who would be, you would be saving. Look me in the eye, okay? Would you be willing to commit today, right now, to send that letter tomorrow to the state? You're talking about procedures?
Well, hang, well, hang on. So the letter wouldn't come from the council from Mr. Laffin, though. So it's coming from the engineering department and the, the police chief.
Okay, he's talking about saving a life. Mr. Carmody, what did you just say, recently? How many lives?
Write a response.
I'm sorry?
Can I respond?
Yeah, I'm sorry, if, yeah, if you'd like to respond, Councilor Laffin, please.
So my first email response to you was, did you get what you needed? Did you get the letter?
No.
Right. And in the, in the last council meeting, you came back and you said you didn't quite understand what I meant by my email, so I sent another one, a follow-up.
Well, I never got that one, but go ahead.
Go back, I can show you, or resend it to you. Did you get, did you get what you needed? Which is the letter that everybody's been talking about today. Now you're talking about the, the engineering letter, not the homeless shelter.
No, I, I'm talking about the engineering, but what I'm pointing out is.
The other item that's not on the agenda, that's for the engineering department, that the administration's working on and battling the state with.
Okay, I, I'm just pointing out the, what I'm pointing out is the hypocrisy that I'm actually hearing from this board tonight.
Nobody up here disagrees with you.
I, I totally agree with, but you're talking about the urgency to save 14 lives.
Yep.
Hypothetically.
Yep.
Okay, and I'm asking for it because I've been hit, I've been almost hit, twice.
So this is our opportunity to do something about this.
Six weeks, you're talking about the gentleman king three weeks ago, or two weeks ago, and you're jumping all over, spending 111,000 of taxpayer money that contingency or whatever, whether you approve it or not. I'm all for homeless shelters. I came from Willimantic where they had 19 halfway houses. So, you know, this is, I, with a mil rate of 60. So I, I'm kind of used to wasting taxpayer money.
Yeah, we can't write your letter. We're the legislative body. And, and I appreciate that you've come to our meetings to make us aware so that we can apply pressure, and that you get time on camera and let the world.
I'm, I'm not interested in my, my time.
I know you're not. I, what I mean, though, is that I, I appreciate and respect what you're doing. We can't write that letter from us.
And so you're, you're jumping all over, two weeks later.
We can do this.
Two, two weeks.
We can do this.
I asked for six weeks. Six weeks.
We can't do that. That's not the, that's not the mind people are sitting here.
Never mind, because I, I feel my point is being wasted. It really is.
No, but Mr. Callag, no one in this room disagrees with you, though. There's no one in this room that disagrees with you. That signal is a problem.
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Explain to me why it takes six weeks. You talk about process.
Right.
You're talking about jumping the process that Mr. Tesla actually stated, and you said you support process. So you're talking processes or procedures. What I, what I'm used to is procedures. Same thing, okay? So you explain to me that you're following a process.
Right.
So tonight, you're jumping the process.
Correct.
To approve the money.
Right.
For 14 individuals hypothetically that you might save from the cold this, this winter.
Right.
When I pointed out six weeks ago that you are saving the individual you're looking at.
Right, so, but the difference here is, one is we don't own the signal, right? So our appeal is to the state to correct an error on the state, but quite frankly, this has nothing to do with this item, though.
Okay.
So do you have any feedback on this item?
Never mind, no, I'm done, I'm done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. This is nonsense.
Anyone else on this item? All right, Madam, I'm sorry, Councilor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess this is for Mr. Senna, Mr. Mayor. So if we, if this gets approved, because the amount now is 111,000, I believe, for the motion, are we, I, I don't, I don't know what we is, but are we still going to look for donations to fund possibly 50, however much we can get? Is that still the intent?
I would say yes.
Okay. I felt okay with the 60,000, 111,000 I'm, I'm leery about, obviously for reasons I stated before, and for, you know, I, I know you weren't here, Mr. Gill, last year, but obviously, things did not go well last year, and we, and we gave money in anticipation of something happening that, that did not happen, and.
Well, I think we found out tonight that you had not, that it actually had funded the project in the back. It hadn't gone to the emergency shelter. It wasn't until it was brought to everyone's attention that the shelter wasn't opening, that then the city, rightfully so, said, what's going on, and then invested the 22,000. So I think that that was a misunderstanding.
Okay, so, so you, you make my point even clearer then, to give 111,000. There, you know, the history here is not, doesn't sit well. And obviously, we, you know, I, I want the shelter to open as much as anybody. And I know, you know, probably based on my comments, you probably don't think that's true, but we just, we need to make sure that what, what we intend to happen with taxpayer money is going to happen. And so like I said, the 60,000, if we could open it, I was good with, the 111,000, I'm, I'm not so great with. You know, I think I can, I can get behind it if, if we're, you know, if we're going to be trying to looking for, look for donations that can maybe cover that. You know, this is the, this is, this is a nonprofit. I looked up the, the 990, I mean, there's five people on your board that make over $100,000. So we're, we're asking the taxpayers to kick in money, and it's not, I, I just don't want, I just, I just want to make sure that we're spending this money well, and I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping if this passes and we, you know, we get some donations and everything, that everything goes really well this year, and it serves the purpose, purpose it's supposed to, and that we're hoping for. But I think it's just, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, we're putting a lot of faith in you, you know what I mean? That if, if this passes, that things are going to go the way that we're, we're hoping they do, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council on this topic? All right, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allison, yes. Carmody?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Moro?
I vote yes, and the motion passes. Seeing no other business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, Mr. Gill. Thank you all.